I now call the April 14, 2020 Work Session Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Borders lead us in the pledge allegiance and invocation will be given to us by Councilman Bailey?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, and his rule, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dearest heavenly Father, thank you for the many, many blessings that we are able to enjoy. Thank you for the ability to live here in this wonderful city and this wonderful state. Please bless us in all that we do here tonight. And please bless that all of the people that put their lives in danger helping us through this crisis that we have. And that all of the people that serve us in their everyday lives, the police, the emergency responders, the doctors and nurses, and all of the employees of the city of Riverton. Will you please keep them safe and help them get through this in a healthy way? We ask all these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct roll call?
Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
I declare a quorum as present. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has a motion and Councilman Hancock has a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Community service contract presentation, finance director's report, please.
Thank you, your honor, members of the council. Thanks for this meeting this evening. The city of Riverton receives direct distribution funding each year from the state of Wyoming. The funds are utilized to support one-time capital purchases and projects, and then also to fund some of our various community service organizations in the city of Riverton. These organizations are not under the direct oversight of the city, but they, and they're not maintained to city departments. Last year, the council approved funding requests of $290,000 to 10 different entities. Beginning February 18th of this year, the city staff began noticing the public of the application process. We posted the notification on our city website on February 18th. It appeared on YO today on February 19th. There were three posts on our social media site, Facebook, February 19th, March 10th, and March 31st. We also posted an advertisement in the Rangers, the Riverton Ranger on March 10th. And then I did send out emails to our existing recipients on March 25th notifying them of this process. This not only notified our current recipients, but it did allow other organizations who haven't participated in the past to be aware of this process and get them involved. This year, the city staff received $351,724 in funding requests for 12 different organizations. Because of the recent COVID-19 outbreak and subsequent health and safety protective measures, the city staff asked the organizations that, in addition to submitting their applications that they provide us with a brief five to seven-minute video presentation about their organization and how the funding will help them. The purpose of this meeting is informational only. It's to allow these organizations to come before you and allow you to view their applications, and it will help you in determining funding distributions as we move through the budget process. I would also like to thank our IT department for all the wonderful work that they've done. I think Tim called it our IT wizardry to put this together for all of you tonight. Boy, COVID has really put some, put some new demands on them, and they're doing a fantastic job. And so they definitely deserve thanks for helping us with this process this evening. So I think with that, I'll turn it over to Tim.
Thank you, your honor, if I may?
Sure.
In order for your process, as Mia pointed out, we do have a video for you. Those have been strung together. I'll have control over them here. We would propose that we play those one at a time, stop after each of them. If there's any questions that council has that might be posed to the different organization, we will write those down for you, and then we will provide those to them. They will send it all back. We will consolidate those answers, those questions and answers, and then we will give those back to you. As we've done in the past, this isn't the time where we determine funding allocation because we're right in the middle of working on the revenues and the expenditures of the budget. So a recommended amount is probably not, is not available to you right now on how much to distribute. What we have done in the past, in the same scenario, is you've been provided a sheet both digitally and in front of you today. If council would like to provide your suggestions to that, what we have done in order to weigh that effectively is we have taken all of the input from council, and we have turned those into percentage numbers of total funding that each individual is proposing. What that means is if you attempt, if you say, "We're going to provide this group 13%, 13% of your total allocation," so the mayor's allocation or Councilman Bailey's allocation is here, it becomes a 13%. That way, we can sort of normalize, because if one person does $350,000 worth of award and another one says, "Well, we need to cut it to two," they weigh differently if you're using actual dollars. Now, that is not necessarily a means of saying, "Here's the recommendation," but it does give you a good idea of what the overall feel of council is once you're evaluating it at that time. That's how we've generally analyzed it. So if council would provide that to us, if you feel comfortable with it, by all means, we would use, we would be appreciative of that. That can be provided to us after we get all the questions answered for you, of course. With that, your honor, I'll be happy to start at your leisure, and you can direct me accordingly.
So we just sit back and get popcorn?
Yes.
Okay.
There's soda machines down the hallway, and we should have actually made popcorn.
We could have had popcorn, right?
Wednesdays, right? That's when we'd have popcorn.
Fridays.
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 Fridays. I'm sorry.
Ready?
Ready. Set, go.
Good evening. I'm Kara Hancock from Big Brothers Big Sisters, and I'm excited for my chance to visit with you about our program. I'm just going to take a minute to share my screen. I have a PowerPoint presentation. Before I do anything else, I want to say a great big thank you to the city of Riverton for all the work that you do in supporting us and the community. Tonight, we are requesting the amount of $3,000. These funds will be used to support direct services to Riverton school-aged children, primarily those who are seeking a mentor in our program. These services include enrollment of the families, background checks for volunteers, and the steps taken to create a development plan for these youth, and then to continually check and work with these youth. But overall, what we're doing is Big Brothers Big Sisters defending every child's incredible potential. Our mission is to create and support one-to-one mentoring relationships that ignite and power and the promise of youth. A little bit about what I do, I match bigs and littles. These meaningful mentorships meet at least once a week or several times a month. We have two different kinds of meetings. One's called a site-based. Those mentors come to visit their littles at school. It's a site-based match. We also have community-based matches. Those matches meet after school or on the weekends. So my job as the program director is to meet and visit with those bigs and littles to find the schedule that works best for everyone. Big Brothers Big Sisters Fremont, we work with all youth. Any youth can receive services from Big Brothers Big Sisters, but we collaborate with local schools, law enforcement, counselors, and other providers to serve at-risk youth, and our littles are soaring to new heights. Big Brothers Big Sisters benefits the community with parenting classes. Some of our favorite classes this year have been self-defense, thank you, Corey, college scholarships, what you need to know now and in the future, and making meals together with sensible nutrition. We also have some fun with our family match activities. These activities are meant to increase positive outcome for youth and their families. We provide one-to-one mentoring services as well as case management services and family engagement activities. We really enjoyed the Riverton pumpkin patch and corn maze, and then showing our thanks by decorating cookies and delivering them and thank you cards to those who have inspired us. And also the Riverton Rendezvous Games, which we hope to participate more in next year. The mothers and parents and guardians of the youth that I work with really appreciate Big Brothers Big Sisters, and they say that Big Brothers Big Sisters makes a difference. I wanted to share some special quotes. This was from a mother who can't, had to call me right after her son's IEP meeting, and she very excitedly explained that she asked the school a little bit about her son's big brother. The school said that her son had really been motivated by his big brother. He worked really hard to make sure that his schoolwork is done so that he can visit with his big brother. And then when he's finished, he goes and waits at the office for his brother to come. That mom was very pleased. Another quote from another mom. Tomorrow, the little brother will be visiting with his big brother for a few hours to play and have some time together. Little brother has been talking about it all week. As a mom, I'm truly so thankful little brother has big brother. It's been an amazing relationship for them both. So again, I say thank you for the way that you have supported and helped Big Brothers Big Sisters in the past. It has really made a difference. Currently, we have 37 active mentoring matches between bigs and littles. Last year, we served 92 youth in our family match activities and our parenting classes. 46% of those lived in single-parent homes or with other relatives, and 61% of those received free and reduced lunches. The support you gave us last year has made a big difference for Big Brothers Big Sisters. In the records that we've kept, last year, 100% of our youth maintained or improved in areas of juvenile justice, social competence, and social acceptance. This included having or receiving a very important adult in their life. They're gaining and learning to trust the adults in their life. In the area of educational expectations, 93% of our youth maintained or improved. Big Brother Big Sister anticipates that next year we'll have at least 85% of the youth will maintain or improve, or in at least two areas of outcome measured. One of the biggest aspects of our program that has grown is the major improvement in the number of interested volunteers and matches made. Big Brothers Big Sisters has made 20 new matches in Riverton alone since July of 2019. These new matches, our program relies solely on community volunteers to serve as mentors. Right now, Big Brothers Big Sisters has 26 littles that are waiting to be matched. In the last few weeks, Big Brothers Big Sisters Fremont has received seven new applications from high school volunteers who are excited to participate next school year. We can always use new volunteers. I am so excited, especially in this hard time in our community, to see so many people motivated in having this volunteer experience. Unfortunately, without more funding, I won't be able to match them. Big Brothers Big Sisters Fremont continues to grow. Our community has so many amazing volunteers. There are some big changes coming up from Big Brothers Big Sisters, so not to surprise you if you see a new name in the papers. Big Brothers Big Sisters in the next 12 months will be merging with Greater Wyoming Big Brothers Big Sisters. Their headquarters are in Laramie. So together, we will all become Big Brothers Big Sisters of Wyoming. There are many advantages to this merger, including streamlined administrative costs, allowing various stable federal or private grant funds to more directly support our local families and communities. But regardless of that, 100% of local funds will always be used to support local services to local children. If you have any questions or any part of this explanation hasn't been clear, please contact Kara Hancock from Big Brothers Big Sisters. My contact information is kara.hancock@bbbsnorthwestwyoming.com. You're welcome to contact me there or on my phone. It has been a pleasure to visit with you, and I hope that this video has been an adequate way for us to visit tonight. I'd be happy to answer any more questions or to fill in any more missing information. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful evening.
Hi, this is Tammy Galitz, current chair for the Central Wyoming Arts, Technology, and Science Center here in Riverton. I'm sad that we can't be presenting to you guys as the city council. I also said that we can't be giving you a tour of our facility. We're currently in our home, just doing the stay-put, and we are going off of everything that the school board and, of course, the state is recommending as far as when we will be able to open the center back up. Of course, we will have it completely sanitized and do all of those things to make sure that everything is healthy and ready to go for our children. CATS by SHORT, it was started, I always put it off on, when I remember the timeline. Annika, who's currently our filmer, was 18 months when I was approached to be on the Board of Directors and be one of the founding directors. She'll be 12 and two months, so it's been a long process. Our doors have been open for six years. Our anniversary is in September. We are able to host a lot of different events. We have a good relationship with our recreation as far as different art classes and science classes that they will do at the center. We have an amazing Board of Director team. We have a lot of previous teachers that are on our Board of Directors, and they help us with, Bill Ryder is huge. He helps us out immensely with all of our exhibits. Nan Shelsta was a founding director, and she's always helped us out immensely with grants and everything else. And of course, Barb Yates is, she's our secretary, our treasurer, and she does a ton for us. So we're definitely privileged. Oh, and this is Kurt Galitz, he's one of the Board of Directors too. I don't think I introduced him. I just started talking. Anyway, so we are applying for this grant. A lot of it is for funding expenses. We, our goal was, when we started this, is to keep it relatively inexpensive for families. You know, when you have a family of four to go to the movies, it's, you know, $60, $70. So we were really trying to keep it affordable for families. With that being said, sometimes keeping things affordable as far as our expenses is our rent, our utilities, our paid staff, doesn't always meet in the middle. So that's definitely why we're applying for this grant, so that we can, Fremont County's children can keep coming and have it a little bit more cost-effective. We've had, we have several different homeschool groups. They come and use the facility. We have people from all over the state that come over and use the facility. Like I said, birthday parties are very, very popular. A couple different stations, we have so many stations. We really, like I said, it's the art, technology, and science is what we focus on. So we have a lot of different art stations. We have the dinosaur. We have the dinosaur exhibit for digging for dinosaurs.
Annika is mouthing that we have a pizza center where kids can have pizza as well.
Oh, okay.
You're getting some help from our cameraman in there too, so.
So that's her favorite, is the pizza center, where they can make pizzas. We also have the veterinary clinic, which the stock doc donated a lot of money for that. To have, they can do x-rays on all of the animals. The hermene, the, I can never pronounce, the favorite, the harmonograph.
Yes.
To make your own drawings. That's always been a huge favorite. The airplane, the flying airplane, that's been, that's always been fun. It's a little over my head. I crash all the time. We, of course, we have had the music room. The one that we have had since that happened is the solar eclipse room. And that's been very interesting. That was very much so focused on science when all of that was happening in our area, and we do still have that in there. We are getting ready to change out a couple of our exhibits. I believe that they're bringing back the bubbles. That was, is definitely a kid's favorite. It's definitely a little bit of a mess, but, but it's definitely a favorite.
And then to kind of highlight some of the, I think you're going to get some of this information in our application, but currently, we have 10 board members with CATS to make, I guess, that all those fun exhibits run, maintain. And we currently have 89 family memberships, and last year, we had over 3,520 individuals visit the Children's Museum. So that was pretty dang amazing for us. We do feel that the Children's Museum is a safe haven for kids, where they can come and learn and grow socially and intellectually, which makes us feel like this is a pretty socially important aspect of our community. We do have a hefty budget, for us being nonprofit, of $52,000 a year. And the big thing that we do run into is maintaining a paid staff. And obviously, that is, becomes difficult when you're relying off of, well, we try to keep an affordable membership. It does sometimes become difficult to keep that paid staff. We're very fortunate that we've had several individual donors, several business donors, and we had over 800 hours of donated volunteer time as well. But having this grant would be absolutely, I think Tammy would agree, instrumental in keeping the Children's Museum active, keeping us growing, keeping us adding new exhibits, keeping it fresh, and also just keep, keeping us going. So I guess, I've been a part of the Children's Museum for two years. I couldn't be more thrilled to be a part of such a great organization, and I cannot thank you guys enough for taking time to consider us for this grant. I don't know if Tammy wants to round it out.
Yes, definitely. Thank you guys so much. We do, we are always constantly working on different fundraising ideas too. That has been, we have a fundraising committee that we've been kind of trying to focus a little bit more in on that. I know we were supposed to do the Daisy Dash here a few weeks. I know that that's probably not going to, actually, no, that's not going to happen. We do the Polar Express, which that was a huge, huge turnout. A huge shout-out to Casey Bailey and Terry and Terry Bailey and.
A lot of their crew.
Yeah, a lot of their crew. They did so much to help us out on that this year. So that was a huge event. They had a real train. I'm not sure if you guys were able to attend to that. Definitely a lot of different other ideas and things floating around there. We did the Fall Festival downtown. Just in kind of, we're really trying to brainstorm and have a good fundraiser every quarter just to kind of help with those, with those costs.
Obviously, our first quarter kind of got derailed with some social distancing plans. So another reason why this grant would be phenomenal for us as well during a time where everybody else is obviously struggling, so.
Yes, I think that's, if you guys have any questions, please feel free to contact either one of us, and we'll be happy to answer anything for you guys. Thank you so much for your time.
Mayor, city council, thanks for your time. We are coming each individually from our own home during this virus time, where the community is trying to keep the rules, and we've been trying our best to set an example at the park and during this, this time. But we appreciate you guys hearing our request, and we've been working on a grant, and we've requested $1,500 for various things. It's spelled out in the grant. We want to teach some classes, and we'd like to continue with our lighting in the evenings, which has been a nice thing, and I'll let some of the club members talk about this. I'm Matt Wright, and join us is our, join with us is our club president, Cesar Munda, and Michael Deloiz is here, and also Brayden, forgot your last name.
Anderson.
Anderson. So you guys want to introduce yourselves real quick, or I can turn it over to Cesar, and you can talk a little bit?
Yeah. So we feel that, let me get my words together. We feel that with, with using the funding for the lights and keeping them on, we can attract and still keep the members in our community that are a bit older and that may or may not have day jobs. There are a lot of factors that play into having, into why we, why this club is advocating for these lights. There are a lot of factors that play into having, into why we, why this club is advocating for these lights to stay on. And a lot of them includes the fact that they have a day job. It's a lot nicer outside at night during, during late spring, summer activities. I mean, summer season, sorry about that. And there's a lot less people there. And so overall, it's better, it attracts older people who may or may not be a part of the community we're trying to uphold. And so we, as a club, would be very grateful for, for this funding because it would uphold our sense of trying to, of trying to bring the community together and trying to rebrand our skate park to create more of a fun, accepting and positive area.
Yeah, cool, thanks, Sessar. Yeah, and another, another benefit is, is just extending the hours of the park. I mean, you pretty much said that, but it's without the evening time, if you have concrete out there, it can be skated anytime. It's a use at your own risk facility, it's not supervised. And so just having more hours to skate is, is nice to, to do that, so. But yeah, it definitely gets the older people out and that's fun, so. And with that, there's gonna be some older people, some of my friends and other community members and some of the real advanced skaters want to be teaching some lessons this June, which is the first time we've done that formally. We want to group up and, and set some goals, some realistic goals for each skater. And they'll have a mentor with them to give them pointers on whatever they want to achieve. And, you know, they'll, it'll be at a set time and we'll public, do some public advertising for that. And so we feel that that's open to the community from a volunteer organization, nonprofit, using the city facility. And so it'd be nice to get some funding for that so that we can provide some equipment. We want to teach safety, have some pads and things which will be utilized and we, yeah. So that's that, that'll be a lot of fun. You know, Michael and Braden, you guys are both learning to skate right now and progressing fast. How much does it help you guys to be able to learn from somebody else? Not just watch, but like get pointers and, and some of that, do one of you guys want to talk about that a little?
Oh yeah, I can. So I only started like, like maybe four months ago. And I wouldn't have gotten, have learned so fast without other people helping me through. Cause I just had like so much support and like tips and stuff. I just learned everything just so much faster and it was great.
Yeah, and Michael is somehow reporting from the skate park from last winter, obviously. And getting easier with us now, of course. And Michael has been awesome with the park maintenance. Like he was shoveling pretty much every time we were shoveling, Michael was there and we appreciated his work. And he's listening and attentive to the needs of the park. And so he's kind of the, the head of the committee for park maintenance. And yeah, if you want to talk a little bit of that, Michael, that'd be cool.
Like the only really problems that we had was like park maintenance, park maintenance was like over like in between like summer and like winter and then. Because like all the snow was melting from winter, from the warmer heats in the summer. So like some drains were getting plugged and like we had to find it and stuff. So like something that would help with like finding the drains or something would be like to mark them with like a pylon or like traffic cone or something where they like stick out of the snow. So like we could just dig straight to it and like just build like a, I don't know, just pathway to the drain, if that makes sense.
Yeah, totally does, and yeah, it's a great point. Just wanted the city to know, we, and we also have ideas for improvements. There's some berm work we need to do because there's some erosion happening around some of the corners, which was something we had on the plan when Dreamland was around, but some of them had to leave early and it just didn't work out. There was some funding issues too. So there's still some work to be done out there and we can, we can do that. But as long as, as we can get a little bit of help, funding for these things we're requesting, that will leave us open to do more fundraising, to include some of these future plans. And continue to fundraise for the fun events that we're putting on. We've got a few events, as long as this virus thing, once it slows down and, and we get our park back to full functionality, we're gonna hold some events and have some fun this summer, that's the plan, so. Thank you for hearing us out, I think that's gonna pretty much wrap it up. Appreciate your time, appreciate you considering this. And creating a way, this grant was, was great, it's the first time I've seen this. And it's nice to know an organization like ourselves can ask for money and we feel supported, so appreciate it. Supported by the school district too, that was fantastic, so. Any last words from our crew here?
I think that's it.
All right.
Yeah, that's it.
Signing out.
Good evening, my name's Michelle Woodmare and I'm the Director of Eagles Hope Transition. I would like to start off by telling a little bit of the history of how Eagles Hope was founded. Back in two thousand and thirteen, there was a young gentleman who was a transient, knew that lifestyle of alcohol and drinking. And there was a group of individuals that did outreach in the park. And he decided that he wanted to change his life for the better and he went to treatment. And he took the steps forward to change his life. Unfortunately, he was released with no place to go in the middle of winter. So he went back to the lifestyle he knew and ultimately froze to death. That group of individuals had a heart for him, his name was Dana Eagle. And he is the reason why Eagles Hope Transitions is here today, to give others hope. And the mission of Eagles Hope Transitions is to provide individuals with the opportunity to reintegrate back into the society, the community and their families by giving them job readiness training, financial training and the basic life skills to be able to get a job. We provide a safe living environment for them, we have a zero tolerance of drugs and alcohol. We are in the pantry where residents can come in and choose whatever they would like to make for, for their meal for the day. In order to be a resident, each person needs to be looking for a job, have, have employment so that they can be self-sustainable, because that's our end goal, is to get them transitioned out back into the community where they're self-sustainable with their families. As well as looking for a job and being employed, you have to pay rent here. And so we have small rooms that are two seventy-five, then our standard rooms are three fifty. And then for the bigger families, it's four fifty. So each person is accountable to their room and how much they need to pay. Right now, we have twenty-four adults and seventeen kids. We just had a brand new baby born on Saturday night. This Eagles Hope Transitions does. It allows a place for individuals to come to reignite and be with their families and get their lives back on track. Hello again, we are in a different setting, we're now in another kitchen. This is down where the old Good Samaritan Center used to be. We are in the modular that Eagles Hope Transitions recently acquired. We acquired their buildings and all of their assets. So we are gonna take this building, the modular, and it's gonna be Phase One of Eagles Hope Transitions, which is the emergency housing. Right now, I have seventy-five people on my waiting list and it just keeps climbing every day. And the Good Samaritan Center was a resource that I use to refer people that I wasn't able to take. But by not having it, my waiting list has just grown. So the need for emergency shelter in Riverton is really important. So that's why we've taken this on. And we are in the kitchen and our cupboards are empty. We don't have any of the basics that we need to start the emergency shelter. We don't have plates, we don't have eating utensils, cups. So we're gonna, it's gonna take a lot because we ultimately are starting from scratch. But we know the need in Riverton to have emergency shelter. We need money for bed mats, for bedding, just to get up and going, cleaning supplies. This building has not been up and running, providing services our community needs in almost a year. So it's really important for us to be able to get this up and going. So we are outside of our Phase One Eagles Hope Phase One Progressive Living. And we are all gonna be under the umbrella of Eagles Hope. This is Phase One, Eagles Hope Transitions is Phase Two. Phase Three is transitioning out successfully into the community. So I am asking for twelve thousand dollars to maintain our water bill at Eagles Hope Phase One and Eagles Hope Phase Two. Five thousand dollars for essential items to be able to get Phase One going, we are in need of a lot of supplies. And six thousand dollars to fix repairs that we have. Both of our properties are old, they're old and they've got a lot of issues. But we're trying to take them and make something good for the community to be able to help our community in the times that we're at. So I just come to you and I thank you for your time in listening to me talk to you about what Eagles Hope Transitions is, is by expanding to Phase One and Phase Two. Thank you so much for your time.
Welcome, City of Riverton Council members and staff, this is Noel Cooper with Injury Prevention Resources. And I am recording a video for you all regarding the services, funding requests for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. First off, I would like to thank you all, obviously, for allowing us to request funding and your considerations. And also past funding that's been able to help make an impact on the safety of our roads here in Riverton and all of Fremont County and even other parts of Wyoming past that. And so obviously, I want to start out, you know, any questions, by all means, you can email me back, call my cell phone. It's a work cell phone, so it's always on, three oh seven eight five one four oh seven oh. Don't hesitate to contact me if you have questions. And I'll just kind of dive in, give you guys an explanation of where we're at with, as an agency and how coronavirus and COVID nineteen has impacted us. So I, I think first off, I would just wanted to start and let you guys know we are still funded for now. As always, it's a concern on the annual basis, let alone when, you know, a virus or something like this comes along and can lead to just changing in the way we have to do things. And so our entire traffic safety event side of our agency, we ended up having our funding dropped for that. And so that was right around two hundred thousand dollars of funding. The good news was, is we adapted as we typically do. And so when you see this funding request, you'll notice there's a couple of different things in there. One of them is support for the programs that we have always ran and continue to run. And we of course, hope that by, you know, July one of, of twenty twenty, when this fiscal year starts, that we'll be back to doing those things. But in the meantime, we've actually come up with a really great and creative way of, of doing things and resubmitted our, our grants and funding to Wyoming Department of Transportation. And they have refunded us and so we are good to go with a minimal financial loss, you know, of not having a grant for about a month, month and a half. And so you'll see both sides, you'll see the events that we typically do. And then you will also find within there that we have a couple of different methods of which we are still putting out traffic safety information. And we're actually quite excited about it and, and we're gonna be starting on it very soon. We've already done a little bit out there, but not with the grant funding. And so it is, the first one is a virtual traffic safety events that are online. We are going to be putting in County Ten and through some other local sources of media, our social media as well. We were going to be putting up just all kinds of different video clips and ways of still getting the roadway safety message across. And so what we're really looking at is, you know, our rollover unit, demonstration units, our seatbelt convincers. We want to video those things and provide some information with it as well. We're hoping to be able to get a couple of dummies and kind of put one of those, you know, helmet strap GoPro units on the dummy and run them through our rollover simulator so that you get a, you know, a firsthand account via the video of what it is like to be in a rollover crash unbuckled and buckled. And so we're really excited about that, along with all kinds of other things. The next fold of that would be the virtual Traffic Safety Perception Challenge. I'm sorry, not virtual, just Traffic Safety Perception Challenge. And we are going to be doing a lot of mailing out to community members. We are going to help get some flyers in with food delivery services locally and even go help, you know, pack school lunches or anywhere else that we can be a benefit and be able to give out flyers, hoping to help with delivery of meals and groceries to our elderly community and be able to deliver flyers to that route. So the exciting part is that through the new methods that we're going to be utilizing, at least until the, you know, coronavirus pandemic has passed, is gonna actually help us be a little more involved in the community and engaged more than we were so. And so we'll be able to do flyers, we'll be able to do mailings, we'll be able to do all kinds of different things that are going to challenge our perceptions on roadway safety. We're really excited about it, it's, it's pretty great to have the opportunity to adapt in the middle of this versus feeling like you're going in reversion, so we're grateful. And yeah, stay tuned, please, you'll be able to see a lot of the stuff we have going on. And past that, I, I think the only big note I had on there is you guys are gonna see a, within our budget, there's a, our personnel service has increased and part of that is because we hired another staff member. In part because we wanted to dedicate Ms. Lynn Burner, she's one of our DUI monitoring agents and offender monitoring agents. We wanted to dedicate her to doing a lot more GPS and remote breath and all of these proven methods that we have that can help people stay sober and at least have some accountability for location. I, I know that right around fifteen people, we have had GPS bracelets on through the City of Riverton court. And they've been public intox offenders that we're trying to keep out of local areas. And so that's been just about a year running and it's been pretty awesome. You know, we've been able to use technology to keep some of our recent and reoccurring public intox offenders that go to the public places like the parks and the bike paths. We've been able to, you know, help uphold the judge's orders and make sure they're not going to those locations. And so we're grateful for that. Past that, we continue to do a lot of remote breath for Riverton residents and alcohol monitoring bracelets for Riverton residents. I know that our remote breath numbers, you know, the beginning part of this fiscal year. year that we've had nearly a hundred and twenty-five people between remote breath and bracelets and GPS. And so we are staying busy, trying to help combat, uh, drinking and driving. And if we can combat, uh, you know, frequent overconsumption of alcohol for people who are, um, offending and reoffending and causing issues in our community, then, um, it's only a pro and a win for us. And we, we hope that you guys see it that way, too. Um, that's, that's about it past that, that I can think of. I could list a million other things we do. Uh, it never stops. Um, uh, I think probably the big noteworthy one, I know that we've, uh, graciously, the City of Riverton has hosted us for years as our adult alcohol education class. We will have that back, uh, online in a virtual session for the time being, to where people can still attend and get what they need to out of hearing that, um, panel of speakers speak about how, uh, impaired drivers have impacted their life. And so, um, we're grateful, we hope you guys are staying healthy. Uh, roadway safety is still, um, you know, a, a major issue. Uh, it's killed more people on the daily than coronavirus has. And we want to challenge people's understanding of remembering, um, to, uh, be aware, but also know your threats, know what is facing you. And so we're really just encouraging you guys to wash your hands and then use those hands that are freshly washed to buckle your seatbelt. And if we can get people to do that, then, um, we're going to come out ahead in our community. Uh, thank you guys for your time. I can cut it, uh, short. I'm sure that you have many videos to watch and I know, as you know, I can talk for at least twenty-five to thirty minutes. And so I appreciate you folks. I hope you stay healthy. If you have any questions, by all means, reach out, email, phone, you name it. Um, yeah, thank you very much. Stay healthy and be blessed.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. I'm grateful for the opportunity that I have to be on a Zoom video, which I've grown accustomed to in the last few weeks and present to you our funding request for this fiscal year. The City of Riverton and Youth Services of Fremont County, also known as Juvenile Justice Services, has partnered since nineteen ninety-four. We have appreciated and are grateful for that continued partnership. I know that over the course of the years, we've provided many services. We continue to provide those services and we also are enhancing them to ensure that we get change in behavior from the juvenile justice population. Over the course of the last year, we have seen an increase in citations from the City of Riverton. Overall, in Fremont County, we have three hundred and thirty citations. That was up from, up forty-three from last year. And of those three hundred and thirty, two hundred and sixteen were issued by the City of Riverton Police Department. We understand how busy it is there. We know that property crimes have been, the trend has been going up. Um, we continue to address substance abuse. We provide substance abuse treatment. We provide evaluations. We provide ankle monitoring systems through our Community Juvenile Service Board. It's a funding stream. We receive dollars through the State of Wyoming, um, to service juveniles as well. We also seek funding from the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. Those dollars are approximately twelve thousand to thirteen thousand, depending on the, the availability of funding. But we continue to do that to service our detention center process. We collect all the data with detention, we collect all the data with all of the citations and how those citations are disposed of. And we continue to do that year after year. We house two juvenile probation officers in our Riverton office. Um, I'm also located there seventy-five percent of the time. And we have a direct services provider who's at the Y O ten day reporting center. And he services, also does a lot of, of urinalysis testing. He does a lot of supervision of community service projects and overall supervision of those clients that attend the day reporting. We also have a support staff here in Lander and we are utilizing and sharing resources as much as we can to alleviate costs and to be a lot more efficient in how we maximize our services and provide services to our communities to work. I also know that, um, over the course of the years, training is vital to continuing longevity, keeping, keeping staff happy, but also making them feel, um, that they're accomplishing something and that they're appreciated. And we, we continue to do that. We couldn't do it without your support. We appreciate the ongoing support. And I know that difficult times are ahead, are ahead for all of our communities, they're ahead for us as individuals. Um, but I have been very impressed by not only the City of Riverton overall, but just, you know, in our communities and our, and our citizens overall. I know that over the course of time, it seems like these juvenile matters continue and that we, we do respond well. We have a very good partnership with the County Attorney's Office. Michael Wyatt is our juvenile prosecutor. He does an excellent job and he is inundated with requests constantly, not only from our offices, but from also the law's Department of Family Services. I want you to know that we are available to you. If you have questions of us, please feel free to contact me. I can be reached by cellphone at three zero seven four three eight six one two three or obviously by email, which is melinda.cox@fremontcountywy.gov. I look forward to our continued partnership and I wish you all the best during this time and, and thank you for all that you do. Have a great day.
Good evening, Mayor, Guard and City Council. This is Gina Gladman, Shelter Manager at PAWS for Life. And we're just doing the little video demonstration for you. We thought we'd start off with looking at some of the critters that the, the city funding, um, helps us provide for. And, um, as you can see, we have a full house. And, um, we just want to say thank you for the partnership that we have because we truly cannot do it without you. And, um, all of these critters are currently up for adoption. And as you can tell, with the, with the pandemic, um, and having to be closed for the most part for the public, they are very lonely. You can hear them crying in the background and, um, but we just wanted to say thank you. Last year we were down a little bit on numbers, but, um, that didn't mean that we didn't have critters constantly when we were looking at our shelter reports to send to you. Um, our length of stay has, um, actually increased, um, for, for our, especially our cats. Um, when looking at that, our puppies stay an average of fifteen days. Our kittens, as cute and cuddly as they are, they stay an average of sixty days. And then with our adult dogs, they stay an average of thirty-eight days. And we noticed that our adult cats are averaging a length of a hundred and twenty days. So, um, we always have a full house. Uh, when we have people come in to take a look, they're always like, wow, you have a lot of cats. And yes, we do. And so, um, we just wanted to show you some faces of our kitties. As you can also see, we have our, um, kennel sponsorship program. Um, if anybody's interested in sponsoring a kennel, um, a cat adoptions, our cat kennel sponsorships are a hundred dollars. It feeds the animal, our animals in that kennel for a year. And then, um, we'll also do a dog sponsorship, too. This is Luke and Griz. They are PAWS alumni. Um, they actually were adopted by one of our kennel staff. Um, she originally fostered Luke. He's the, the black one with the cute, beautiful ears that stick straight up. She fostered him because he was a feral pup that we trapped. So fostered him and his sister until, um, they finally gained some confidence. And then Griz came in, um, with his brother and sister, um, but they came in with Parvo. So, um, she helped nurse them all back to health and, um, then decided she couldn't live without him. So, so they come down and, um, help us figure out which cats don't like dogs. And then, um, I'm sure there'll be guinea pigs in the future when we need to see how other dogs, um, are, if they're socialized with other dogs or not. So, um, they got a bright future here at PAWS of working dogs. We were closed for spring cleaning, um, last week, or actually two weeks ago. So that gave us a chance to get our dog kennels cleaned outside. So as you can tell, it's a lot quieter in our dog room. So we, um, um, they're outside enjoying this nice weather right now. Um, when the weather isn't very nice, we bring them back in, of course. But these are the dog kennel sponsorships, um, and they are three hundred dollars, um, to sponsor a kennel for a year. And, um, we sure want to say thank you to everybody that helps in every way that they can so that our doors can stay open for these guys. As you can tell, it gets significantly noisier out here with everybody. You got to see a, a little bit of a different perspective of where your city funding goes with looking at the cats and the dogs. And, um, we just wanted to hit on some of the fundraisers we're doing to help raise money. Um, of course, PAWS and Girls remains our biggest fundraiser that we do. Um, but we've noticed that, um, the income is, is declining over the years. Um, we reached its peak and then, um, it's slowly, we've noticed, um, our income is going down from it. So we've been trying to implement different fundraisers that we do. We tried Mardi Paus last year and man, that was fun. You got to come, um, the music, the dancing, um, the Mardi bras. And, um, so we're also working on a vaccination clinic with Animal Control, the City of Riverton and the Stock Dock. We're wanting to offer a low-cost vaccination clinic. Um, as you know, um, if you look at the reports, the animal bites are on the rise. So we're just trying to help, um, do our part in making sure everybody's animal can be vaccinated, um, for rabies and, and all the other diseases. So we'll be planning that as soon as we're able to. Um, we're looking at, um, doing a rescue dog show. Um, we got that idea from a, a program on TV. So we're hoping to do that. And, um, but we just want to say that we're thankful, um, this guy, if you notice, he shaved. Uh, he was brought to us, um, when he got out and, um, the neighbors got a hold of him, the kids did, they shaved him. So, um, for his safety, he was brought to the shelter, um, to find him another home. So, um, but we're thankful for the opportunity to help these guys. And we're so grateful that they have a place to safely be until somebody is ready to adopt them. Thank you for everything.
Mayor, I do have a question. Um, in reading their, um, application here, I noticed it said, uh, the alternative will be to turn the operation of the Riverton Animal Adoption Center back over to the City of Riverton. So was this originally owned by the city and this group stepped in and took that over? Is that, you're understanding that?
Your Honor, if I may.
Please.
Um, Councilman, I believe somebody else might have, um, that's been here longer than me, might have some better idea of how that transfer happened. However, generally speaking, the responsibilities associated with that tend to fall to the municipality. So this is a true contract for service in that it's not a donation. It's a contracting a service that we would otherwise provide.
Your Honor, the Riverton Police Department did run it, our animal control officer did run the PAWS Center for quite a while.
Thank you.
Your Honor, also, the city owns the building.
Yeah, the facilities are all the city's. And, um, in the past, we used to use euthanize a lot of animals. That was our only choice. And when we got this organization to come in and, and take over, they've, um, I don't know if they're a hundred percent, they try to be, don't they?
Yeah, so it's only if an animal is, um,
damaged.
Uh, like violent and then also if it can't, if there's, yeah, there's no other option but to euthanize.
They send animals clear to the East Coast at times, so, um, probably well-spent money, in my opinion. With that thought, I don't know if we,
Sorry, Your Honor.
if we had to take that back over, what do you guess the cost would be?
Your, Your Honor, we did, I did a rough calculation last year, more than forty thousand dollars.
I assumed that.
Yeah.
Probably double for your staff of yours, so. And services would drop off considerably, I would suppose. And then we'd have to go back to eliminating some animals because we would, just wouldn't have the time to, to sit there and advertise that, so. Thank you.
Way, way back in October of two thousand and eight, the City of Riverton contracted with Central Wyoming College to begin providing recreational programming and services to the citizens of Riverton. A lot has changed over the past twelve years, but our goals have stayed the same. We continue to evaluate programs in our community for gaps and expand offerings to meet the needs from toddlers to seniors. We want something for every age. Our youngest participant is thirteen months and our oldest participant eighty-two years young. We will continue to expand our offerings, which includes athletic programs and leagues, arts, crafts, hobbies, and other forms of enrichment activities. We want something for every person in our community. We continue to successfully coordinate and implement the Summer Academy Program in the month of June. We consistently receive over one thousand registrations in this outstanding program each summer. We will continue to be a clearinghouse for other recreational programs in our community. Guess how many community partnerships we have? Over forty, that's a lot. We will continue to maintain the quality of our programs by providing professional, experienced and qualified staff, coaching and officiating. This is always a significant expense, but one of the absolute best assets in the integrity of our program. We plan to continue publishing our high-quality seasonal brochures three times a year. We've been told that families sit down together and look through it to choose what activities they want to participate in, kind of like browsing the old Sears Christmas catalog. Because of your generous funding, we can continue to keep the costs of our program we can continue to keep the costs of our programs reasonable and affordable to all our residents despite any socioeconomic barriers. In 2019, our recreation served a total of 5,062 community members with over 300 different class offerings. And the 2019 Summer Academy had 101 classes and 1,148 enrollments. That's impressive. Our website is the most popular link on the Central Wyoming College website. Riverton has a lot of wonderful people that want opportunities for their families and it is an honor for our recreation to continue serving them and growing our program. The residents of Riverton have often expressed how grateful they are for our extended programming. We thank you, City of Riverton. Our recreation fulfills a mission to strengthen our community and contribute to the economic development. Our goal is to enrich the lives of all Riverton residents by providing affordable, diverse recreational and cultural opportunities by focusing on families, youth development, and building a healthy community. It has been our privilege to provide this service for the City of Riverton. Thank you for making our goals a reality for our community. We love you, City of Riverton.
Hi, Mayor Garden, City Council. I'm Ashley Strickland, the Director of the Riverton Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. First, I'd like to say thank you for the partnership that the city has provided. You guys are a huge advocate for us and you guys have been nothing but supportive and we truly appreciate everything that you've done for us. So thank you so much. I'm almost a year into this role and every week I see how you guys advocate and how you guys help us and support us, so thank you. So the money that is granted by the city every year goes towards wages for our admin who helps act as a liaison for the visitor center. It also goes towards materials that we send out for visitor and relocation packets as well as postage that helps get it there. In 2018, travelers spent $136.6 million in Fremont County. This helped generate tourism in general, helped generate 1,430 jobs. And it also helped generate $6.9 million in taxes, both local and state combined. The Riverton Chamber of Commerce acts as our community's visitor center, which provides information and visitor and relocation packets. Our job is to know what's happening and keep up to date and accurate information so we can share that and pass that along. Also, every four years, the county approves a lodging tax and a portion of those taxes come to the chamber to distribute as grants for different organizations and groups. So this is our TAD process. They use these funds for events dedicated to bringing in tourism and creates an economic impact for our businesses, which in turn brings in more taxes for our city and state. So it goes full circle. So you guys have helped us and in turn, we've been able to help all of these different organizations and groups because of everything that you guys have done. So thank you so much. So as the visitor center, I, part of our job, I believe, is help create tourism. So the funds provided by the city have helped sustain what's been the norm, but I would really like to improve on that, create and improve our visitor center side. So we should be educating our community to help educate tourists on our town. My plan moving forward is to create a fam tour for businesses and their employees. So this will help employees answer the question, what is there to do in this town? The tour, which if approved, will be a biannual event that takes local employees to all of the amazing things our community has to offer. It'll include things like museum tours, restaurants with local tasting, local food tasting options, hiking, riding, biking trails, breweries, art tours, information on Native American history and culture, fishing, hunting, off-road, off-road activities. And we'll actually give them knowledge as well about the different websites that are available and the different information that's available to help them be able to find all of this information as well as different events and activities locally that are currently going on. So instead of saying there's nothing to do in this town, they will actually have the knowledge to direct our Riverton visitors to a great place based on their own preferences. My goal is to also increase events that could be major tourist attractions. More tourists equal more tourism spend, which results in a greater economic impact, more money coming into the community, more jobs created, and more taxes collected for our city and state. Eventually, I would like to expand to be able to create another job at the Riverton Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. This position would help facilitate all of this. So the tours, the fam tour, the events, and the visitor center side. I do realize that this will be a process. I have a five-year goal. And the fam tour and the tourist events, I would actually like to turn into fundraising fundraisers to help be able to sustain the visitor center on its own. So the funding provided by the city has been a huge asset and has helped us to give back to the community with economic impact. I'm excited to help expand on this. The more economic impact we can create and more tourists we can bring to our community, the more taxes will come back to our city to utilize and the more we can help our businesses thrive. With the strain COVID-19 has had on our entire world, our, our community has suffered tremendously. Prior to COVID-19, we averaged over 10,000 visitors a month during the summer and over 6,000 visitors a month during the winter. This pandemic could potentially stop over 60,000 visitors during, people from visiting our town, whether that's stopping at a restaurant, filling up with gas, visiting our local stores, museums. All of those little things help sustain our local businesses and brings money into our town, into our community, and that's, that's suffering. I realize that the city has to make a tough decision when it comes to these grants, but I hope you realize how crucial tourism is to our community and the role the Riverton Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center plays in helping this industry. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Erica Cooper and I am the Office Manager at the Riverton Help Center. And I am representing them in this request for funding from the City of Riverton. Fremont County has the highest rate of poverty per capita in the state of Wyoming. Many residents live in extremely precarious financial situations and just one crisis may place them in imminent danger of homelessness. In addition, many clients are unaware of both the resources available to assist them as well as how to access them. Clients are often ill-equipped or uninformed in the areas of budgeting and discernment of needs, planning, and setting goals. The Riverton Help Center addresses all of these areas in the attempt to empower clients and encourage sustainability. Funds are used to directly assist clients with the following general financial needs: rent, rental deposits, hotel rooms, utilities, medical expenses, which can include eyeglasses, prescriptions, and even fuel to make it to appointments in Casper, Denver, Salt Lake City, or Billings; food, emergency hygiene care, and emergency clothing needs. Assistance will be given to clients who experience the following general examples of crisis situations: loss of employment, eviction, emergency situations such as loss of housing and other essentials due to fire, et cetera; unexpected expenses such as necessary vehicle repair that jeopardize the client's ability to retain employment; clients who are presently homeless or in imminent danger of homelessness; and unexpectedly high utility costs. Financial assistance is granted on a once-per-year basis per household. And all requests are required to go through an assistance committee that consists of board members and volunteers. All assistance, whether financial or resource referral, is intended to empower clients and encourage future sustainability. We receive funds from the Salvation Army. We are the people that you see ringing the bells during Christmas time during the Salvation Army Kettle Campaign. And 90% of those funds stay here in Riverton, used for direct assistance. We also receive funds from the CSBG grant. We use that, those funds for the salaries in utilities and also for direct assistance. We also partner with Whistle and we have helped build ramps. Eagles Hope, where we have helped people maintain their lodging. We use Wyoming Energy Share in order to help pay utilities during the wintertime. And we help people apply for funds from the Volunteers of America Rapid Response Fund. Thank you for your consideration.
We, the Board of Riverton Little League, thank you for your time and attention to baseball as well as other civic matters during this difficult time. Rest assured, we are waiting, somewhat impatiently, to play baseball. Baseball season is the time of year that hundreds of kids grab their gloves and make their way to the fields. The stands fill up with parents and siblings, the air smells of popcorn, and the excitement is palpable. Many of you remember your Little League days and I remember mine. Even though I played right field and worked hardest at finding the dandelions in that area, I have fond memories of getting a few hits, just a few, and hitting the occasion, the concession stand afterwards. Baseball season is the ever-present reminder of summer and the possibilities waiting for us all. It has been said that there are only two seasons, winter and baseball. In Wyoming, this is especially true. It is that experience that Riverton Little League wants to deliver to today's youth as well as tomorrow's. There have been remarkable successes in our mission. Last season, close to 300 kids from four to 14 played baseball. An average of six games were played each night at the Ron Saven Complex, while the larger field on Sunset, home of the 2019 Little League Junior Division State Champions, hosted another three games a week. After the regular season ended, Riverton hosted its annual tournament, Battle at the Winds, as well as the regional playoffs for Little League minors and majors. The state tournament for juniors was also held right here in Riverton. Several other cities and towns in Wyoming leave their entire field preparation and maintenance to the local Parks Department. Riverton has neither the staff nor the budget for this. The Volunteers of Riverton Little League have happily assumed these tasks. This relationship has been both fruitful and beneficial for both parties. Little League was able to help offset the cost of a new pump to provide water for baseball and softball fields, both fields, as well as the areas around the fields. Two new scoreboards were installed last season. Our games are now scored and available online and numerous improvements to the field were installed. Some of those improvements, just a few, include removing the lip from the outfield to outfield on three fields, painting doors and dugouts, remaking the lines and paths at the juniors' field to bring it back into specifications, and replacing benches and dugout surfaces. This leads us to where we are today. With two complexes and five fields, the volunteer staff is struggling to keep the fields in a condition that is safe, fair, and consistent. Most volunteers work during the summer and the ones that have flexible jobs put off their regular work to spend long hours at the field. While certainly a labor of love, several groundskeepers' meetings were held at 1:00 a.m. after finishing for the night to discuss what needed to take place in the morning before game time. There is far more to building and maintaining a baseball field than mowing the grass and watering the lawn. It is part art, part science, and part ceremony. As you can see, we start them young. After gauging the work we face once more this season, we are coming to you for help. With this grant of $5,000, our staff can postpone their regular financial commitments and afford to work the hours needed to produce the fields that the City of Riverton can be proud of. We have many plans for this season: new bases, improved base paths, continued replacement of silt and sand with high-quality baseball-playing surface materials, improved grass-to-dirt surfaces, new grass in some sections, and a complete workover of the sprinkler system, which requires new sprinkler heads and mowing and moving, excuse me, of other heads. Mowing is what we don't want to do, that's why we're moving them. While the ravages of winter require this complete reset, we are confident that the field can be made even better than last year. This is a special year. It's not only will Riverton host the Battle at the Winds tournament, but we will also host state for both majors and minors. We're also hopeful that it, once again, juniors will play state here. With the shortened season due to COVID, there is also a good chance that the entire state will travel to Riverton for this tournament as regionals would be eliminated due to time concerns. This would be an incredible way to showcase the fields that we've created here in Riverton. We thank you for your time and attention to this matter. If there are any questions, we are more than happy to answer emails or phone calls. Our details are in the materials provided. Thank you again and have a great day.
You know, those tournaments that they bring to Riverton raise a whole lot of money for the community, estimated in the $70,000 range for a four-day tournament. Food, lodging, all sorts of stuff.
My name is Deb Cunningham. I am the Executive Director of the Riverton Senior Center. This year, as with many agencies, we have seen significant cuts in our budget. We have risen to the occasion to provide more services with less funding. Transportation, wellness, food services, activities, and a great number of other types of assistance are provided by our small center. It has been documented at the state level that our programs are very effective. The state recognizes that these programs are cost-effective and comforting for our seniors. This enables them to remain in their homes as long as possible. Seniors receiving assistance rather than being placed in facilities give our clients dignity and often improves their mental outlook. It is through flexible staff and the commitment of volunteers It is through flexible staff and the commitment of volunteers we are able to perform large tasks with limited funds. With the recent COVID-19 coronavirus epidemic at hand, our sources of funding are limited. The normal program income, local fundings, donation, and fundraisers that we attempt are now nonexistent. We are asking for a specific item, an electric convention oven, which we have sent quotes with the application for your review. Our center does not have the money in its budget or the ability now to fundraise. The staff and volunteers here at the Riverton Senior Center are eager to contribute to our community and hope that you will help us in our endeavors. Our mission is to support independence of seniors, helping them stay active at home as long as possible and not in a long-term care facility. Receiving monies for the stove will help us, help our seniors. The staff and volunteers here at the Riverton Senior Citizen Center are eager to contribute to our community and hope that you will help us in our endeavors. Thank you for your time. Be safe and be well.
Is this something that could come out of the...
Endowment?
Yeah.
I thought they discussed that.
That I was curious about.
Your Honor, you recently approved endowment funds to repair the cooling units in their freezer and their refrigerator. And if you'll remember in my staff report, it's been a couple of months, they have multiple ovens that are failing at the same time. The council did approve funding out of the endowment fund, monies to replace one of those ovens. They are seeking funding to replace another oven.
Okay, but I guess my point is, is that in terms of where this could come from, rather than coming from the city budget, this could come out of the endowment.
It can.
Okay.
How stable is the endowment?
The endowment is stable. We are required to keep a minimum corpus of $850,000. I think we have a little over in excess of approximately $100,000, maybe slightly more, although the council did approve recent expenditures for replacement and repair of some existing equipment. If you would like, I would be happy to prepare the numbers and have them available at Tuesday night's meeting to give that information to you.
Where is the, we've been talking about a solar expansion on that building. Where's that money going to come from? Are we all into grant on that?
I believe that should be coming from the Rocky Mountain Power Blue Sky Program.
Sounds good. That'd be nice to have. Thank you.
I'll have that ready.
Hi, my name is Henry DeClerc. I'm the Fire Chief of the Riverton Volunteer Fire Department. I would like to take a couple of minutes to let you know about our department. We are a fully volunteer, 501(c)(3) tax-exempt organization. Our mission is to save lives and property within the Riverton Fire Protection District. We currently have forty-one active members. Our members have everywhere from fifty years of service to just a few months, just starting off their careers, so to speak. The firemen are also a very diverse group of individuals. They include small business owners, mechanics, utility employees, law enforcement officers, educators, electricians, oilfield employees, and many more. You probably know a few of them just down the street from you. Last year, we responded to 214 calls for service. That includes nineteen structure fires, two cooking fires, five trash fires, and forty-nine grass or brush fires. We also responded to sixteen vehicle accidents, two search and rescues, and one EMS assist. Thirty-three of our calls were for hazardous conditions, which include one gasoline spill, twenty natural gas leaks, one chemical spill, two carbon monoxide incidents, four power line-down calls, and two aircraft incidents. Now, not all of these were serious in nature, but we were called out, asked to come and look at something for someone. We also assisted law enforcement ten times, and we were on scene for an average of seventy-five minutes, with one of our calls lasting for nearly sixteen hours. These incidents do not include the numerous hours that we spend maintaining the equipment, training, or doing other public outreach events, such as visiting schools during the Fire Prevention Week in October. So far this year, we have responded to fifty-five calls for service. These calls have, for the most part, been minor in nature, with the exception of one structure fire, three vehicle accidents, and numerous brush fires already starting. I come to you tasked, again, for the city's assistance in funding our department. While the operations of the fire department are funded by the taxpayers of the Riverton Fire Protection District, the Riverton Volunteer Fire Department, that is, the men who are on the fire department, are fully supported by donations. The funds that we receive from the city directly support our members and their families in times of need. We use those funds to assist folks with traveling for medical appointments. They happen to be out of work for an amount of time. We maybe help pick up a bill or give them some gasoline in their vehicle, something like that. We also use a portion of that money that's set aside, especially for the unfortunate event of a death of one of our members, either current or past, in helping the families with expenses for that. I just would like to thank you for your continued support, and I also encourage anyone that has any questions or concerns to feel free to reach out to me. My phone number is attached in the documents with this application.
Honorable Mayor, distinguished city council members, my name is Jeff Holsinger, and I'm the CEO for Volunteers of America. I appreciate the opportunity to reach out and video and offer our proposal to continue to collaborate with the city on providing critically needed services related to social detox beds and our close ops beds, or our sober beds, as they're referred to. Most of you know that Volunteers of America took over the Fremont County Alcohol Crisis Center back in 2015. We renamed the program The Center of Hope, and during that time, we've served thousands of individuals that have suffered addiction and brokenness. And we have, throughout the years, met so many basic needs that have gone beyond just the daily services. And I'm talking about vocational development, I'm talking about long-term treatment, I'm talking about clothing and food. Volunteers of America continues to, I think, do whatever it takes to help those citizens with hope and opportunity for full recovery. In 2017, we worked with you and with other funders and community leaders to complete a remodel of the facility and bring it to a standard that I think really provided the type of results that we expect and I think that you hope to see. The Center of Hope, it does all this good work and in good collaboration with a number of organizations. We're not just by ourselves providing these services. There's no way we could be successful doing the work we do if it wasn't for the many organizations that assist us. And some of those is Fremont Counseling, Sage West, the Public Health Services in Riverton, Eagles Hope, Workforce Services, Probation and Parole, Central Wyoming College, and certainly law enforcement within Riverton and the county. All of those entities and more are critically important to what we do. So, you know, the message really that I'd like to bring today is that although our funding over the years has been reduced, you're still a significant statement, a significant contributor to helping us be a safety net and a critical provider to people that really have lives that are completely lost and in some cases are hopeless for others to see a way out of the addiction that they're suffering from. One of the things that we pride ourselves and have prided ourselves with is being able to offer Riverton and Fremont County opportunities through our services to have assistance in public safety and cost reductions there, reduced hospitalization expense, and also reduced need for emergency services. And a lot of our clients are, see us as a shelter and a place that they can come to, and many of those individuals that are using or have become known as a revolving door, we have seen many go through long-term treatment, and I think you have too. And so, we can't lose hope. We need your support. You've got a proposal that outlines what we plan to do over the next year, and that is to continue to strive in partnership with the city to address the chronic addiction issues that are faced with so many people in those communities. This year alone, we expect to serve eighteen hundred individuals, and that's a very significant number. I remember when we got involved back in 2015 with the Fremont County Alcohol Crisis Center. On the average, they were sending about five individuals a year to long-term treatment. We have well exceeded that. Our first year, we had over twenty-five individuals that went into long-term treatment. Recovery is a lifestyle change. It's a transformation in a person's life, and it's an investment that's worth making. We're counting on your continued support. I hope you know that you can count on our continued partnership. We're proud to work with you. We're proud to serve the community of Riverton and Fremont County, and I appreciate you taking the time to review our proposal and to listen to what I have to say. And so, I wish you the best. I know that you have difficult decisions ahead. I know we're all faced with the challenges of reduced incomes and reduced revenue streams. Just know that we stand ready to continue to serve and to be as creative as we can with the resources that we have. So, I wish you the best of luck, and may God bless each of you and the decisions you have ahead of you. Thank you.
Chief, do you have anything to add for that, services? Are we using those services?
Your Honor, we do not. Your Honor, so what I will tell you is, he said that they have served eighteen hundred people. That probably is true. I would say that very minimally, it's people from Fremont County, and even more minimally, it's people that we've taken there for help. Me and Tony ran the numbers the other day. What was it for 2019? I think it was...
Six?
Six hundred?
Six hundred and change.
Yeah.
Six hundred?
Those are bed nights.
Those are just, those are one-bed nights. That's not long-term. So, Your Honor, the last time I checked, I think that either three or maybe four people from Fremont County had gone there, and I'm talking Fremont County, the people that we deal with daily, they'd sent either three or four people to long-term treatment at that point. So, I'm not saying his numbers are wrong. They're just not the people that we deal with.
I think you've probably, though, got, whether it's people that you're arresting and bringing there or not, for example, we've had many people through the court system that have been recommended to inpatient treatment, that are released to the Volunteers of America, to the Center of Hope, and then they're taking them to inpatient. I'd actually be very interested to hear specifically, and I agree with you, one of the things that happens with their program now is that they do have people coming from outside the community that come to the program, same as any time you have something like that.
Right.
But they, they do have a number of people that will be in the custody of the Fremont County Detention Center that were likely, I would say, arrested from Riverton or one of the local agencies, and then they are going to stay at the Center of Hope, and then from there, they're going to an inpatient treatment program in Sheridan. So, I mean, I get, in terms of transients that we bring there or whatnot, how many of those are actually going and staying there and then going on to inpatient treatment? It's probably not that many. It has not been happening. I know that Judge McKee has frequently, as a part of her probations, ordered people, "You have to stay at the Center of Hope. We'll be in court." She'll call over there, she'll contact the Center of Hope, make sure they actually have a bed, and she'll say, "The minute you leave court, you have to go to the Center of Hope and stay there." Well, they won't. And so, I guess the reality is, I agree, in terms of that population, I don't think we're getting as much, but I do think that I've got a number of methamphetamine cases, for example, that will go through, but in that situation, it's almost just a pass-through, though. They go there, they're released for maybe a couple of weeks, and then they're going on to inpatient treatment. So, I just think there's different ways that they're getting there and everything, but yeah, in terms of what it used to be, the whole point of the program was, we have the transient population, we wanted to have an alternative to detention. That hasn't been what we've been usually doing.
Right.
Mike, I guess, from talking to them, they don't have the ability to make somebody stay there. So, it's not the same, which I think in the beginning, we all thought, oh, we can put them there instead of putting them in jail, they can get some help, et cetera, et cetera, but the ability for them to keep them there is not, it's not one of the things they can do.
And early on, that was discussed.
Right.
It was going to be something that, you know, we're not going to allow them to leave, and then quickly, it turned into, if they leave, then we'll just call law enforcement, and by the time you're called, where you, what, you're on a manhunt for somebody who walked away from the Center of Hope.
So, we did arrest one person and charged him in court, and Judge Roberts was like, "This is not going to happen." So, we did try it.
But I guess you're right, in terms of where, so it's different.
What we envisioned in the beginning was an alternative to putting him, incarcerating him in jail, and a less expensive and a more productive way of doing that, but that isn't how it worked out.
Right.
Right, and it turns into the same thing as jail. They go there until they're sober, and then they might get out, and then they'll be back in jail or there even the next day.
Where do you want us to go now?
Your Honor, we have nothing else at this point. I guess it would be a recommendation that if you have any questions that you know of right now, you can tell us right now. If not, that is all the presentations that you have. You have also been provided the background information that those organizations have provided you within your packet. If anybody has any questions, if they could have it to us by, say, the end of the week, we could consolidate those, send them out early next week, and have the expectation that by the end of next week, we get all those answers back. So, if you have any questions about any of these, you want any information, specific statistical data, just like we had talked about, if you're curious about something, we can ask those questions, and then we can turn around and provide that right back to council, so you're knowledgeable at the time we discuss the actual allocations. But with that, Your Honor, we don't have anything else for you.
When are we going to do the actual presentation of what we feel is appropriate funding? Do it next work session?
I need to look at the budget calendar one moment. Your Honor, last year, the decisions were actually made during a budget meeting. It wasn't a special work session meeting, but they were open to the public. Let's take a look here.
We did that in the Herbicott Room, didn't we?
We did.
Can we do that again?
Yes, Your Honor.
I think we did it midday, too. Was it like two o'clock in the afternoon?
Yes, Your Honor, that is correct. We do those meetings in the afternoon.
Because we're sharper during the day, is that...
It does help. We get less punchy.
Good. Maybe you guys could get the popcorn machine running.
Yes, Your Honor, we can.
Common theme here.
We have capital project planning scheduled for Tuesday, April 21st, and because it is supplemental funding, we can discuss it during that meeting.
So, does that work for everybody? Is that a good idea?
Yes, Your Honor, I believe that would work just fine.
So, do you want to do it, at what time on the 21st?
It's scheduled for 1:30 on the 21st.
Might be hard on some council members.
Is that a Tuesday?
I'm not able to swing it on Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. Do you want to schedule a separate side meeting?
We can run it separate, we can run it. Your Honor, if you give us the week, we can, by the next meeting, we can have that discussion during the administrative report on exactly when we can put that, but what we could do is, just as Mia discussed, we could move it to a Thursday afternoon and as a budget work. And we, if you remember with all of these, we did advertise all of them as part of our schedule, so they are all open to begin with. So, it doesn't hurt to have council all together.
That'll get in the middle of kicking trash. That'll get in the middle of kicking trash. Everybody has to bring in a sack of trash.
What we did last time is we just, from there, we just went right out the back door. Started kicking trash.
You really did.
I would prefer that Tuesday, if we can, Thursdays are not good. It's just my calendar.
Anybody else got a preference? I can do either day.
I can make either one work.
Yeah, I think Tuesday's fine. Can you get?
I'll have to see the schedule. I can call ahead.
I can make either work, sir.
So let's go Tuesday since it works best for Tim. Kyle, are you there? I hear you in the background.
Yep, I'm here.
Do you, do you care Tuesday or Thursday?
Say again?
Do you have a preference on Tuesday meeting or a Thursday meeting?
Whatever you want.
Tuesday's bad, guys. I see some nodding going on over there.
Your Honor, I apologize. We were just looking at which Tuesday, more of a which Tuesday conversation.
21st?
Yeah.
Was the Capitol one you said?
That's why, that's the reason I'm.
The only thing is you wouldn't have time to get questions and answers if we have any.
It's true.
Does anybody have any serious questions and answers?
I want to know the answer. I'd like to know from the VOA how many nights we have actually had referrals, either from, just referrals from Fremont County, let alone Riverton, that people have actually been staying there. I'm curious about that. I'd prefer to know from Riverton, though.
From Riverton for the year 2019, I believe it was 600 and?
Well, I mean, in terms of people that you arrested and brought there. But I'm just curious in terms of city of Riverton. And that's where it gets difficult because arrests that you brought there, that's one thing. But then you also have the judges releasing people on bond to the Center of Hope, and that happens fairly regularly.
Don't we, Tony? Doesn't that amount to three beds per night?
Your Honor, overall, we do have access to three beds. I believe we ended up calculating it out. We pay for two. They had one quote-unquote donated. I believe if that's the only question we have, Your Honor, if that, I think we can get, that's very specific, and we can get with them and say, you know, "In order for us to consider this." That'll keep us online for the 21st without any real challenge.
I don't, I don't think I have any questions.
I do not.
Tim has that one, and you're all right? Kristen, you okay over there? I think that'll work. Let's get that information. I think all of us would like to know that. But I think we're paying for, or at least the formula is done on a three-bed system for every night, for 365, right?
I believe that's correct. We'll double-check. I believe that's correct, Your Honor.
Appreciate it. So do you want us to, do we want to come to that meeting with how we, with our own allocations ready?
Your Honor, that would be preferable. If anybody could send them ahead, we can consolidate them and do some analysis on them to probably provide some information. And then council can do with that as they see fit.
But what if you moved them around? And then we wouldn't know where we were at.
That's fair.
Do you have an idea of the total we would be looking at yet? You were saying you'd get that.
Your Honor, at this point, we don't, what we're doing right now is working, so council understands, what we're doing right now is trying to work through the different revenues and expenditure, revenues that we're anticipating. The challenge that we have is that there are some that are going to take a 20%, 20% hit. Some of them are allocated, so the amount of money that we usually use here doesn't necessarily change because it's an allocation from the state. However, we haven't had to use that to offset operational costs before. And that case may very well be what we run into right now. So without knowing exactly where we're going to land, it's a little bit challenging. We'll probably be able to give you a rough estimate of what we would recommend you stay within, but that's up to council's discretion.
How early could you get that to us? Would we have that before that meeting or?
Your Honor, you probably will not. I'm sorry.
Well, that's where life is. We'll have to hear that when we get there and move our numbers. That's the way that works. That work? So would you explain again what you would like us to do before Tuesday?
We will answer the question that was provided. On the sheet that you have, just whether digitally or written, provide me the, how you would see that allocation going out there, going out there regardless of how much it ends up being. We'll total it up. Just fill in that sheet with regard to the different requests.
Dollars, not percentage?
Dollars. We'll do percentages and handle that. Just what dollars?
And is that in our packet? Did we start off with that?
You have a hard copy, Your Honor, and there's one in your email.
Do you want us to do it electronically? Is that easier than by hand?
If you can do it electronically, that's great.
I'll find a 12-year-old to help me.
I have one you can borrow.
Any other questions?
Your Honor.
Anybody in the audience? You guys done doing solitaire out there or what have you been doing?
Mayor, if I could make a couple of final comments, for those of you who can count. I obviously am not one of those people. There were 14 presentations tonight. My staff report said 12. I had a couple come in later and I failed to update that. And I also just wanted to take a moment to thank the organizations that I've worked with in collecting this information. I think as you can all see, we have some people in our community that perform some fantastic services for a lot of people in our community, which makes your decision really tough. But I did want to reach out to them and thank them for their work in getting this information out to me, their work in putting the presentations together, and their work in the services that they do perform for our community.
Thank you for your work. You've done a great job to get it in bad times. So we do appreciate your efforts and theirs. So if there's no other objections, we'll stand adjourned. At 8:56?